You cannot legally renew teachers or promise any faculty or staff jobs until you know the county has approved your budget for next year. Now that this has happened, majority, a vast plethora, majority of those people will be given their assignments for next year. At the same time, in alignment with the slides that were proposed, there will be, in some situations, part-time positions that are no longer offered, but full-time faculty positions with benefits that are then satisfying those positions. So, to tell you honestly right now, to give you a specific number, it would be unfair, because we still have the opportunity, with the time that we have left, for potential retirements, for potential shifts, which means we could bring back. But, you know, overall, it is a very small percentage of positions that unfortunately were a true reduction in force that will result in those, in not bringing back those staff. And if you go back to the March meeting, I really tried to take the bull by the horns and present honestly and with transparency the positions that we did in fact have to cut and that wouldn't be cut, and we spoke about the supervisors, we spoke about elementary counselor, we spoke about some, you know, two assistant coaches, et cetera. So, those positions were true reductions in force.
Okay. Um, I know Mr. Bishop mentioned that the new county term is here, what about the old county term? Are they any held responsible for any of this?
That's not...
Any of this?
That's not, it's an ongoing discussion with our vote attorney to see what we can do, if anything.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Michael, did you take your name off there?
Yes.
Yeah, were there any more general questions, Mr. Scott?
Michelle. I think I can answer this, Michelle.
Michelle, yes.
So, in that regard, I was just like to know, are you going to make this presentation available online on your Board of Education site?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, the other, I just have a few questions. I did pay for dressing, um, any positions that we need to cut, because I was interested in pulling out, I'll leave it at for a later time, and so the decision about that, and then, so we're talking about putting two support finances meeting, also, you talked about putting these finance meetings, so who exactly takes part in those finance meetings?
There, right now, there's a committee of four. Ms. Adrianopoulos is the chair, um, Mr. Abriscado, um, Sherry, and Josephine are the four members on the finance committee as of now.
Okay, and Mr. Bishop, if I say, do you like to explain what the health, I know that there's a 2% cap, and this went over about three, maybe it went over by 1.2?
Correct.
Do you mind explaining how that difference is covered?
What happens is, with healthcare costs, you allow a ratio that you submit to the county, and they approve it to give the call healthcare adjustment. In our case, I would allow a 1.2% adjustment, so I'm allowing a $40,000 adjustment that I can add to the budget, offset the healthcare, and that's where I come from. And that's because of the taxpayers to help cover the rising healthcare costs of the district. Every school district has the same option, if they qualify for it, that's how we do it.
Okay, that's it, thank you so much.
I think that's it. We have one more. Ms. Cozien?
My mouth was lower than my lips.
Uh, agree.
You know, um, going back to what Debbie said, I was gonna ask the same question. Is the business administrator and the interim superintendent that was involved in the current years where we had the problem, they're not responsible whatsoever for anything?
They, they really, there was no, there was no crime committed, there was no money taken, it's just, um, I guess, bad accounting, um, that, there's nothing, no chargeable offenses that could happen, I don't think, I mean, we have, we have an attorney that can answer.
Hi, I can tell you that we have made a claim to support insurance carrier for what happened during that period of time, but other than that, we can't discuss any legal strategies or legal action we might have taken against any prior employees, prior professionals. Once everything is settled, we will let the public know, but right now, we can't discuss that publicly.
Um, yeah, going back to that year, so I kind of went up to the board of decisions and I said, why are work meetings no longer open to the public? And the response was, we don't have to, because we all agree. Well, apparently, the board didn't know that they were agreeing to things that, and I think it's because there's nobody really involved to know what's going on. Now, I've asked for our meetings, and the work sessions are always closed, always committed to ask questions. Well, I'm not gonna commit to ask a question if I have no idea that there's anything going on. But if the public is invited to a work meeting and can hear that there's things going on and there are opinions whether they're for or against, because when we come to the meeting, everybody goes, yes, which is their prerogative. But possibly in a work meeting, if there is a work meeting, but apparently there's not, is that the truth, there's no work meetings? That is the question.
We have executive, uh, we have executive meetings where work is done, and, um, I guess because of you, it is now open to the public. So, the first time, once we start the meeting, it's open to the public, but when we go back, uh, an executive session, talking about personnel or anything private, um, of course, you can't be privy to that.
That's right, because, um, you understand, but the problem is, is, um, what I'm saying is, like, the agenda that comes out every week, every week, the financial, the school activities, etc., etc., it's ready, done, and over with, and they vote on it, and you haven't discussed that in work sessions, because the only thing in a work session could be litigation or personnel. So, when are you actually voting on that? Like, when is Joe saying, well, I disagree with what's on here? When, when is that discussed by the board?
The board can discuss it anytime they want, we can discuss it when it comes up here, but if everybody's saying yes, then there's no discussion. I mean, if somebody had a problem...
You used to have work meetings, why do you know, you've done it at work meetings?
Well, we, we, yes, because the work meetings was combined with the, with the main meeting, and we should discuss them...
No, you had, every meeting also used to have, we know I've heard...
Well, yeah, we, you're right, we did. And we, and at that point, we would discuss stuff, right? And we had two meetings, one public, both public, one work session and one, uh, public session.
The work session is open to the public?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
That's the agenda, that's the discussion agenda. But here, I'm not quite sure when you guys are voting on stuff that's on your agenda now.
Remember, we're voting on it here, public, when we do, we're voting on it. Though, we, the board members can talk about it if they have a problem with whatever, uh, at this meeting now.
Because nobody ever does.
Well, that just so happens that nobody ever does. Once in a while, Jimmy has, uh, has, I would say, and Aaron, I noticed, has talked about things at, at the public meeting, you know? If they don't have anything to say, then it's a yes, and we go on. I mean, you're right, we did have a separate meeting, but it depends on what the board wants to do.
It was always a work meeting, all of a sudden, when the one superintendent left, we got an interim in, and I talked to that interim, he said, we don't have to have work meetings.
No, we don't, we don't, we don't have to have, but...
But we had them for, I took the back thirty, since the seven...
Since, since, for a maximum...
Sorry, I know it's not great, because I know, but seriously, there's always, the transparency is what I'm saying, is not there anymore. And I'm, I'm quite disappointed with what's happened. Um, all right, to go on one question. Um, before we get to here, next year, we had zero budget for it. Why do we pay $700 next year? That's what we did.
I understand, John, that's foolish, foolish.
Next year, you zero?
We never, we never had any money for the previous, before, after program.
Okay. All right, good, thank you.
My name is Lynn Sasek, I oversee the staff on the Board of Education. I prepare the RTR report and I send to each division for education. Does that never include them? Like, I provided what amount of money you should use for it? Was that not ever made clear to?
I guess not, I can only say what I found in the floor, it was directed, so I can raise.
If you should make that a microphone.
Now that it's being done correctly, and you will do the RTR right away?
Correct.
That will give us, it should give us a substantial...
Absolutely, absolutely, we consider that, of course.
Okay, because that's, I did this once, I, I...
There was, there was, when, when the audit was, was being done this year, and that was one of the questions that was presented, where is the money coming for the students that fit, that are in residences that fit this category? And when it was told that, that the district had never put in for that, that we had never sought that, um, that was, that was huge, that was a big question, because that was pervasive. Um, and, you know, yeah, and there is no going back on that for, for one year, for multiple years, but it's, it, it really is basic, I mean, if there are no sidewalks, if it's a hazardous, um, pathway to school, that's automatic, that money comes back. So, unfortunately, that was never sought before, but moving forward now, it is.
Yeah, when I got here in September, I realized...
I started here in September fourteenth of this, of, uh, eighteen, or seventeen, actually. And I realized that I had to wait till the audit started, for I to start Q and A, and that's what I started to do. And we got to the bottom, and we corrected it internally how it should be being done, so going forward is not correct.
I know that, yes, we've got little issues, I understand that, I really hope that something can be done, because that should have been caught in the audit, of all time ago. We have this thing, it's riding us, and it's costing me this much money, and we paid good, she paid me, I took bills, I billed the winners. So, the fact that we need the money from the state for that, I want to tell you that that was just, I honestly...
Well, I can, if you read our CAFR reports for the last seven years, I went through each one for the last seven years, trying to find out any recommendations or violations in the audit, there was zero for the last seven years.
Yep.
Not a recommendation, not a violation, nothing stated about it.
Yeah, every audit we saw was fine, with no problems.
Perfect.
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 That's what the board of ed's doing.
So, right, so I went through that, those CAFRs, right away, it's a red flag, because you never have a perfect audit, there's always some sort of recommendation. You might have any violations, but there's always a recommendation, no one's ever said perfect, there was zero, for seven years. How's that possible? That's a red flag to me, so I started digging into the books, and it's ready to come up.
Just, you know, just my experience, sitting here, listening to this in the TRTR, my, my just pulled it up to, I did that for twenty-five years, I did one recommendation, I cannot understand that, that would be important, that is so much money. Well, thank you.
Mrs. Donovan, you have a question? Oh, wait, we have no then, wait.
Wait, we can't, um, from camp to audit, you just spoke about, was that our five audit, or that's the county audit? Like, this is, okay...
It was a private one.
Private one, with no recommendations, and...
None, zero.
And with that information, that's how the county rubber stamps and said, here you go for your next audit?
Correct.
Um, so, we fired his audit day, correct?
Correct.
Hundred percent, okay, and we can't talk about it, but we're looking into our rights, is what we can do in regards to...
We have our new auditor here tonight.
Okay, fantastic, model. All right, so then, um...
Raise your hand, Jeff, there is...
At any point, though, are we, I know we can't talk about what we told, but is there any realization that the county is gonna be forced to give us money back because they didn't ask for backup? Like, remember when you were there in the presentation, you said you were required to give backup? How, who, who went ahead and did all these budgets and approved them by the county and never asked for any backup or backup? Is there constantly somebody...
I'll, I'll hand that to the attorney, that's a great question.
I assure you, we are looking down every possible avenue to get the money back that we deserve. We cannot guarantee that anybody will come back, we just message her that if there's a way, we will find it for you.
Okay, great, that's great. Um, and then, because of the OFAC issues that we had with the twenty fourteen, fifteen, are we going to pay our new auditors to possibly go through, and since we're asking for money from the state and getting the monitoring, to make sure that we are on pace and that we're not gonna be a bigger hole again? Because if you go, on the average, we lost three hundred thousand since twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, this whole year, who's to say it's another three hundred for the next three after that? So, that's another million dollars. So, well, we have our hand out.
I can assure you, I can assure you, that practices have changed, at least in the last two years. So, we had people handling those, um, those accounts that were very knowledgeable, very trained, um, the switch over to ESAP was another huge training component, which adapted our, our accounting for those, you know, for those. I can't speak with complete certainty for the years in between, but I can tell you that many of our practices changed organically, despite, or, or, and, and that was not in response to receiving the OFAC, they changed way, currently is to...
After twenty sixteen, point seventeen, point seventeen, point eighteen, so twenty fifteen, sixteen, still be unsure.
It's possible, it's possible, yes, anything's possible.
Okay, whoever was in charge of the Title I program, because that seems to be where a lot of the problems were, has the Zephyr's no longer in charge of that ever?
So, it's, it's, we have to be, I want to be very, very careful here, I want to be very, very careful. Because even though you have someone in charge of special education Title I funding, that money is still part of the school's funding, and it is still ultimately managed with the oversight of the school business administrator. So, we can't just say that monies that were perhaps, um, not spent with best practices, and they fall into the realm of special education or Title I funds, that, that goes on the ownership of the person in charge of Title I. That person is working in conjunction with the school business administrator to make the best decisions and use that money under the realm that the school business administrator knows exactly.
They needed to meet with each other.
Absolutely.
And that didn't happen, because it looked like, when you reached OFAC, it looked like somebody was asking for forgiveness instead of permission, because several large ticket items were people being hired, who were being, uh, being hired for Title I school contracts. I could be mistaken, but that's the way I read it, because it means like four or five people lining with salary.
So, it, it, it's very complex. Title, Title I funds must go above and beyond what the district naturally does. So, if you are providing, for example, I'm speaking hypothetically here, if you are providing remedial instruction in all of your schools, you cannot then use Title I funds simply for those schools that get Title I funding, because you're, you've supplanted it, that's what the term supplanting is, you're doing it across your district for everyone. So, now, what are you doing to go above and beyond for the Title I students? That is what you can use your Title I funds for. So, if you have a system whereby you are providing remedial instruction only at your Title I funded schools, then the Title I monies can be used for those teachers. But you can't have a type of remedial teacher in every school and say the ones that get Title I funding are gonna get paid their salaries from that money, because you've supplanted it. So, that's, you know, that's where you saw those teachers and some monies were used for, you know, teachers, that it was, it was a supplanted service.
Mr. Donovan, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question for Scott. In the, uh, the proposed budget for eighteen, nineteen, uh, employee benefits function two ninety-one, you had seven point eight million dollars, that is an assumption of going forward, what do you think it's gonna cost? In there, is there, what percentage of that is health benefits?
Five million dollars, that is pretty much health benefits.
Five million dollars, correct?
That's just, that, five million is just the healthcare, you know, the health insurance. Then you have, and that, you're gonna have prescription, you're gonna have dental, that's something.
Gotcha. Now, estimating cost for one of the reasons of the deficit breakdown is a miscalculation of being self-insured on health insurance side of one point three million dollars.
Correct.
Right? Are we still gonna be self-insured going forward into the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, when it shows when we are self-insured, it's going to cost us a lot in a month?
If I get my way, I know what's going on now, I went off on RFP to look at, I have four responses back for insurance brokers. I can't do much about eighteen, nineteen with self-insurance, but heading into nineteen, twenty, if I can afford to change it, I'm gonna go with it fully insured. If I can price out which one's cheaper to go, I'm anticipating fully insured would be better, but oh no, do I get the new insurance?
When would you, not talking about the board coming in, it's the, when is expiration of this current claim that's in place that we're self-insured?
It just got renewed for another year, so it's...
When?
Back in February.
Correct. And were we aware of this cost back in February? This miscalculation back in February?
No, I weren't, I didn't prove that yet. I had suspicion if I didn't prove that, I'll wait till the audit gets done.
Right.
It also had two catastrophes, too.
Yeah, but catastrophic is different than health insurance, when it comes to, if that's the uncaught employee benefits, because the, the main cause here that was miscalculated back in twenty seventeen, eighteen, was that one point three million dollars.
Well, that one point three million, that was pulled out, was due to the fact that we pulled the fund of healthcare money to pay last year's bills, that's why.
And it's spent before this was started?
Sorry.
We started that much money down in that line?
And there was no comparison of going to, when it was renewed in February, uh, on this year, there was no comparison of maybe we could save money by going to a traditional HMO plan, whatever this out there is, if we were going to do self-insure.
You can't do it at that point.
No.
No, besides, to do that, you have to didn't pay out the backing of that self-insurance, which we couldn't afford anyways, everybody didn't do it.
All right.
But what happened was, in July, the maintenance office, who held my spot, went into the budget, pulled out the funds of healthcare money to pay last year's bills, did two and one point three million change.
Okay.
Can't do that, that's done. So, that already set, so right now, I look at the budget, I'm out, cash, and budget's done, and I had to pay another forty thousand, retro, that came out, there's your two million right there, just in those two spots, and the other various lines add it all up, that's what happened. And I was logged on prior to the beginning.
So, the employee benefits estimate is gonna be seven point three for twenty twenty to now, and that's including full frame, which has strictly four employee benefits plus income, plus kind of pocketized district.
Correct.
Coverage yourself insurance.
Correct.
Thank you, that's all.
Chris?
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of finance facilities and decision planning committee may so indicate now that a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. During night, the motion that the following actions to the board number one and two be adopted.
Second.
Ms. Malick?
Four.
Ms. Jarvis?
Four.
Ms. Adrianopoulos?
Four.
Ms. Abriscado?
Four.
Ms. Drell?
Four.
Ms. Donovan?
Four.
Ms. Currie?
Four.
Ms. Vona?
Four.
New business? Uh... Yes, two, one, two, five.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following actions listed under the category of new business may so indicate now that a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. During night, and make a recommendation that we approve, I would want... Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Malick?
Four.
Ms. Jarvis?
Four.
Ms. Adrianopoulos?
Four.
Ms. Abriscado?
Four.
Ms. Drell?
Four.
Ms. Donovan?
Four.
Ms. Currie?
Four.
Ms. Vona?
Four.
Ms. Currie?
Four.
Ms. Vona?
Four.
New business? Uh... Yes, two, one, two, five.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following actions listed under the category of new business may so indicate now that a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. I make a motion that one to five be accepted, that's right.
Roll call.
Ms. Malick?
Four.
Ms. Jarvis?
Four.
Ms. Adrianopoulos?
Four.
Ms. Abriscado?
Four.
Ms. Drell?
Four.
Ms. Donovan?
Uh, question on number two, that's, uh, for the referendum, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, four.
Uh, one, two, five. Ms. Currie?
Four.
Ms. Vona?
Four.
Number six, beer dissolved at the reputation of the Linters Board of Education approved the contract of employment between it and the Greco, the position of superintendent of schools, pending the approval of the contract of employment by the executive county superintendent of schools. Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Malick?
Four.
Ms. Jarvis?
Four.
Ms. Adrianopoulos?
Four.
Ms. Donovan?
Four.
Ms. Currie?
Four.
Ms. Abriscado?
I accuse myself of the vote.
Ms. Drell?
Four.
Four. Five.
Ms. Vona?
Thank you.
To refuse to accuse myself.
Why do I have to accuse? Because I didn't recprove, it proves when I spoke to the attorney.
And now it's mistaken.
But...
All right, I'm just...
I vote yes.
Because of your problem.
All right.
Is there a, a cabinet?
Okay, here's, here's, here was the problem. Um, myself, because I have daughters in the system, uh, Jo Abriscado, who has people working in the system, uh, Ronnie Drell, who has people working in the system, have to accuse himself because of the people they have there. So, we don't get to vote on our new superintendent because of that. And I guess these are the new, the new laws that came in just recently, or they've been there for a while, I guess. Excuse me?
I think you did the more, you're right, you have a vote here.
Well, I don't, I'm, I don't remember that, but...
You know, it's detailed.
Yes, they, they, they contain more detail and more exact...
And they use the word other, to me...
There's a, yeah, it covers a lot more now than it did before.
It was.
A broader sense. So we don't get to vote on our new superintendent because of that, and I guess these are the new, the new laws that came in just recently, or they've been there for a while, I guess. Should we? Well, I don't, I'm, I don't remember that, but.
You know, or detail.
Yes, they, they, they contain more detail and more exact.
And they use the word other, to me.
There's a, yeah, it covers a lot more now than it did before.
It was.
A broader sense. Right.
Well, there's five votes, there's.
Yeah, there's five votes, so the, the motion carried, um, our new superintendent is with us tonight, Anthony Greco, please stand up. Uh, if you have any, if you have any questions for Mr. Greco, we will have at our next board meeting, we will have Mr. Greco back with his family to do it properly, um.
Chief, this is, this is, this is, this explains it all here, chief, the question.
It's Vona.
Why do we have a doctor with necessity? Uh, I was explaining to him, that's why we made the doctor with necessity.
Right.
To cover, to cover, in case we don't have enough votes, because there's certain members of the board of education that may have a conflict of interest, we recite the doctor with necessity. So we need five votes to approve, pending approval, this super credit, so three, these people can't vote, one is on vacation and asked, so that's why we read this, because they had it every meeting.
Right. So he has been approved, um, Mr. Greco and his family, I guess, will be present at the next board meeting, where you can meet and greet, ask some questions, and then there will be a little something after the meeting to welcome him to Leonard's. Okay, uh, I'm sure he's there, if you wanna talk to him and meet him, uh, he, he, he's a pretty nice guy, but that's up to him. Okay, anybody else? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, we got the motion, like.
First time.
Again, can we have a second?
All in favor. Ms. Alcieri, second to the.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.